Good morning, welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 90th of May. It is now four minutes past nine. And I call attendance, I can see that we have everyone in attendance except for the Deputy Mayor, which will be doing a, I'll do a move emotion that in accordance with 454k of the Local Government Regulations 2012 and 8.6.2 of council's meeting procedure policy, that the Deputy Mayor Jacob Madsen be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Quunzaman. Any discussion? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room, so the Deputy Mayor is here on audio link, so everyone is in attendance. May I just confirm that you are there Deputy Mayor, because sometimes there are tech issues?
I can assure you there are no technical difficulties this morning.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the acknowledgement of country and Councilor Quunzaman, would you like to do that?
Thank you Mayor. We Ipswich City Council acknowledge and recognise the sovereign and human rights of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and the communities of Ipswich to self-determination, meaningful engagement with local government and shared governance and decision-making. We commit through the Indigenous accord to the strengthening of bonds between council and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities of Ipswich.
Thank you, Councilor Quunzaman. We now move on to the opening prayer, and Councilor Ireland would you like to lead us into prayer?
Thank you Mayor. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Ipswich City. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of our community and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name.
Thank you, Councilor Ireland. We move on to apologies and leave of absence, and I have none unless anyone has any from the floor? No, condolence motions, I have nil. Tributes, I have nil. Presentation of petitions, nil. Eight presentations and deputations, nil. Public participation, nil. Move on to matters of public interest and Councilor Quunzaman has a matter of public interest in relation to Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month. I'll hand over to yourself now, Councilor Quunzaman.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor and councillors, I bring to your attention a matter of public interest. This is Domestic and Family Violence Month. The matter of domestic and family violence is of concern to all of us. Not only is it devastating and dangerous for victims, but consumes resources that could have a better purpose. This includes police and court time, financial supportive organisations like the Domestic Violence Action Unit and the need for organisations like Ipswich City Council to endorse prevention programmes. Domestic and family violence is inversely affected by changing social conditions, the cost of living, housing insecurity and unemployment. But at heart are some very profound questions about gender equality, the rights of women to live lives unfettered by surveillance and the rights of children to live secure lives untouched by violence. There is considerable expenditure on prevention programmes. One of the highlights of this is the perpetrator Intervention Programme. This programme offers support and behaviour change intervention to individuals aged 16 to 25 who are using violence in their intimate partner relationships, past and present. We expect this will assist individuals who would not be eligible or suitable for a group the opportunity to gain the support required to change their behaviour. In the men's behaviour change programme in Toowoomba, qualified experienced facilitators provide domestic violence education and support to men who use violence in their intimate partner relationships. This programme is designed to provide education on what domestic violence is and through the themes covered in the programme to assist the participants to understand and change their behaviours of violence and abuse towards their partner or ex-partner. In this programme, men learn new skills to deal with difficult situations, to understand their patterns of behaviour and the triggers, strategise to keep their families safe, enhance communication, create healthier relationships and become a safe rail model for their children. Work with women affected by violence leads them to think of themselves as survivors, not victims, as they learn life-changing skills. It is a difficult and challenging change to a way of living that is dangerous at every turn and leaves children fearful and confused and without a moral example. Ipswich City Council supports the work of domestic violence activists and we envisage a world where no woman or child lives in fear of violence.
Thank you very much, Councilor Quunzaman. It doesn't require a second, I'll put that MPI to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item 11, which are declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Do we have any declarations of interest?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Feckner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items number 14.2 entitled Nicola Street Precinct Clarification of Commercial Terms Associated with the Lease of Metro B Tenancy and item 15.6 titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's Report. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this matter by leaving the room while those matters are discussed and voted on.
Thank you, Councilor Feckner. Do I have any other conflicts of interest, I think, yeah, Councilor Johnny?
Thank you Mayor. So in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Nicole Johnny informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item two on 14... Point, sorry, I always do this. No, sorry, 15.4, item two. The nature of the interest is that my husband Julian Johnny is a lifelong member of Willow Bank Raceway. Although I'm declaring this conflict, I don't believe that a reasonable person could have a perception of bias because I do not have any involvement in the sponsorship process, nor does my husband and we are not aware or privy to Willow Bank Raceway's business dealings. So I invite the council to determine if I continue to participate in the decision process.
Thank you, Councilor Johnny. I think I asked this question at the committee meeting, so I'll ask it again if that's okay. Is your husband yourself an office bearer of that organisation? No, thank you. Then I move that councillor Nicole Johnny participates and votes on that item because there is no personal or financial benefit to her and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Feckner. Any discussion? I'll move that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, no, that councillor Johnny hasn't voted and I'll just defer to the Deputy Mayor, how does he vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
Affirmative, thank you, it's carried. Thank you very much for that disclosure, councillor Johnny. Any other declarations of interest?
Yes Mayor, I councillor Jacob Madsen, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Act. I don't have that lovely piece of laminated paper in front of me this morning.
Yes.
In items 14.2 Nicola Street Precinct Clarification of Commercial Terms Associated with the Lease and 15.6 Minutes of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Report. The nature of my conflict is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building, Ipswich Trades Hall, is adjacent to this CBD redevelopment. I will deal with the matter by... Well generally I leave the room while the matter's discussed and voted on, but I'm not in the room today, so I'll ensure my microphone remains off.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilor Madsen, appreciate that. The Deputy Mayor has raised the fact that he's obviously at home, how do we know that he turns it off? I guess the main thing that we'll know is that, look, even if he, anyone who leaves this room can watch livestream anyway and I guess we just make sure that he doesn't participate, as CEO.
May we check, I think as long as he turned his speakers off perhaps, so silenced the volume perhaps and doesn't speak, that should be fine. Have we thought of how we handle councillor Madsen leaving the room? You'll make him leave and bring him back? Yep, are you happy with that?
Yes, I think, yes Ollie, I'm getting nods around the room. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you councillors. We've moved to item number 12.1, which is the confirmation.
Oh Mayor, I have a...
Oh, my apologies councillor Tully.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. This is in relation to the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report in relation to item three, event sponsorship for CMC Rocks. And in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Act, I declare that I may have a possible conflict insofar as four or five years ago I had an admission pass to a CMC Rocks event. I've had, that's in an official capacity. I have no involvement of any other kind with that and my view is that I can participate in the matter and vote on this particular item and I ask the members to consider the matter.
Councilor Tully asked, do you know the value of that ticket? Of that pass?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
It's hundreds or thousands of...
Oh no, no, it was just for, I was only there for about two hours and on one evening for an official event sponsored by the council.
In official capacity, okay.
But I just make that declaration as a precaution.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, I'll have to make the same one.
Okay, well let's work with councillor Tully first. So I move that, any other questions of councillor Tully? I move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item in the agenda, let me just have a look.
Item three. That's of the Economic Development, Economic and Industry Development.
So it's item, I think, 15.4 on our agenda, which is also if item number three in the event sponsorship committee paper from the our last committee meeting on the event sponsorship CMC Rocks, because there is no personal financial benefit to councillor Tully and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you, Councilor Quunzaman. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. And I see everyone in the room, but councillor Tully have raised their hand. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, so it's carried, thank you very much. Councilor Ireland?
Thank you Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Sheila Ireland informed the meeting that I have a, which one have I got up? That I have a... Sorry, which one did you read out? It's not a declarable interest, is it? Was it declarable?
It's a declarable.
Okay, declarable conflict of interest in item 15.4, the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report, in that I have received through council tickets to attend CMC Rocks.
Thank you, Councilor.
The nature, yeah, that's it, so thank you.
And you'll leave it to us to decide?
Yes.
Councilor, okay, thank you. Any questions of councillor Ireland? I guess I'll ask the same question, councillor Ireland, do you know the value of the...
The council provided the tickets, I've no idea.
And you're there in an official capacity or official duties? Okay, thank you. I move that councillor Sheila Ireland participates and votes in item 15.4 titled the Industry and Economic Development Committee Paper because there is no personal financial benefit to councillor Ireland and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Quunzaman. Any discussion? No, I put it to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous except for councillor Ireland has obviously not voted. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, so it's carried, thank you very much for those disclosures. I now go back to item 12.1, Confirmation of the Minutes of the Ordinary Meeting. So I move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 21st of April 2022 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Milligan. Any discussion on those minutes? Thank you, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, unanimous and carried. Now a late report on an outstanding matter has been relating to the special meeting of the 5th of May of 2022 for Metro B Tenancy will need to be dealt with prior to confirming the minutes of the 5th of May meeting. So I'm suggesting that we suspend the meeting procedures in order for us to consider that amendment to cur that item 14.2 be brought forward to deal with at this time, just to make it a bit easier and for the meeting to run smoother. So I move for a suspension of meeting procedures, that the provision of these meeting procedures be suspended is as necessary for the purpose of bringing forward late item 14.2 relating to business outstanding for item 12.2 titled Confirmation Minutes of Special Meeting. There's no requirement for a second, I put that matter to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, so meeting procedures are now suspended. Noting that this particular item is relating to commercial in confidence, I can see that councillor Feckner has left the room and I'll just ask the Deputy Mayor to, I'll ask Harrison, are you muting the Deputy Mayor?
I can leave the teams meeting and then I'd suggest that the meeting clerk can invite me back at the end of the discussion.
Thank you, I'll let the meeting clerk let me know when that, he's been done. And we won't recommence again. Is he out of the teams meeting? We can't quite sure, but I'll make that assumption that the Deputy Mayor has left. We have a late report relating to business outstanding for item 12.2, the Confirmation Minutes of Special Meeting of the 5th of May. As it's relating to a commercial matter, I move that in accordance with section 254 J3 G Negotiations Relating to a Commercial Matter Involving the Local Government For Which a Public Discussion Would Likely Prejudice the Interests of Local Government of the Government Regulation 2012, that the meeting move into closed session to discuss this matter. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and we'll go into closed session, please let me know Harrison when we're enclosed. So I'll re-invite Councilor Madzen as well. Well, we haven't taken the vote, so he's still not, yeah, I'll wait till after the vote. Yeah. Yeah, I'll give it to you. Okay, I see the public gallery opening up again. Harrison, are we, we're live? Thank you very much. So we've come out of, um, closed session to discuss commercial terms and just a clarification of the terms there. So, uh, the recommendation, uh, is for that council note the report clarifying the commercial terms of the agreement for lease and lease for tenancy to B zero three, the Metro B building, uh, within the Nicola Street precinct as detailed in the confidential report and attached as by the project manager dated the seventeenth of May, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. I'll open up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room and carried. Thank you. We'll now be moving on to item twelve point two. Just double checking that they'll be able, mind saying that, that Councilor Madison and Fekner are able to vote in this one. Thank you. My apologies. I've just, I've got a note here. Did Councilors Madison and Fekner all have a conflict of interest for item twelve point two? Can I, may I ask the meeting secretary? Yep. What, what did they record a conflict for? Do they record a conflict for twelve point two? They didn't?
I think they, well, okay, so they're going to have to come back in.
They're going to have to come in and declare a conflict. Um, my apologies. So who could call them back in? Oh, have you, uh, also, uh, put it, the Deputy Mayor? You may not need to sit down, Councilor Fekner. I'll just wait for the Deputy Mayor to be back on teams. He's back on? Yeah, thank, he's back. I can hear, I can hear his voice. Uh, we're up to item twelve, uh, point two, which is confirmation of the minutes of special meeting. I guess we had a discussion that, that we thought that maybe you had a conflict of interest if you would like to disclose that or not. So we're just discussing, we're up to twelve point two, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the special meeting.
Yeah.
Um, we're just wondering whether you had a conflict of interest there or not, if you wish, wish to disclose that.
Uh, who are you referring to?
We're just confirming the minutes?
We're just confirming the minute, so I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just a point of, we, we've voted on the minutes.
We haven't voted on the minutes for the special meeting yet. We're about to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, yeah. Uh, if he was out of the room and we'd already voted on that.
Yes. Okay, so I think we can, we'll go with the, the, the meeting secretary. It's original advice. Thank you.
Sorry, just to clarify, we're voting on the meeting minutes, aren't we?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and any decisions made in that council meeting have already been enacted and final.
Thank you. So item twelve point two, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the special meeting, that the minutes of the special meeting held on the, the fifth of May, uh, twenty twenty two be confirmed, and that the late report fourteen point two at the ordinary council meeting of today be recorded as a clarification of the resolution made at the special council meeting of the fifth of May, uh, twenty twenty two at item six point one. So I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. I open that up for discussion. No discussion. I put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. My apologies for that. We move on to item thirteen point one, which is a merril minute on the Queensland Health intervention into current waste odour event in Ipswich. Um, and I recommend, A, that council endorse myself to write a letter to the Honourable Yvette Darth, the Minister for Health and Ambulance Services, to request a panel of inquiry into the current waste odour event in Ipswich, and B, that council endorse the CEO to write a letter to the Acting Director General of Queensland Health, Mr Shaun Drummond, to request the current waste odour event in Ipswich to be registered as an environmental health event. In speaking to this, this is a merril minute seeking Queensland Health's intervention in managing the current health and environmental catastrophe being caused by the actions of private waste operators, Ipswich. On the tenth of April twenty twenty two, our community held a Stop the Stink public meeting at the Riverview and District Community Centre in response to significant odour issues impacting the suburbs surrounding the Clean Away site in New Chum. State Minister for the Environment, the Honourable Megan Scanlon, attended the event and has committed to an independent review into nuisance provisions. However, this does little to address the pressing concerns of the local community in regard to the negative health impacts of the odours and landfill sites. Immediate intervention is required from the Queensland Government to acknowledge this issue as an environmental health event and to seek its consideration, establishing a panel of inquiry to address the long-term health and environmental impacts of this event. The Public Health Act of two thousand and five defines environmental health events under section, uh, forty seven, I won't read them out, they're in the merril minute, as well as section forty eight and section two nine four. The residents impacted by odours from private waste operators report a range of negative health impacts, including headaches, sore eyes and throats, nausea and vomiting, chest pains and respiratory irritation. Understandably, residents concerned about the long-term health impacts of breathing in these odours over an extended period. These odours are also having a significant and detrimental impact to their mental health and quality of life. Impacted residents cannot go outside their homes, keep doors and windows closed, cannot dry washing outside as it gets contaminated by the smell, and have reported pet birds dying as a result of the stench. Under the aforementioned sections of the Public Health Act of two thousand and five, this merril minute recommends that the city council makes representations to Queensland Health, seeking its immediate intervention into the serious health matters. As it's a merril motion, it's been, um, moved and seconded. I open it up now for discussion. Thank you, Councilor Doyle.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Harding. Um, and I'd just like to, um, thank you, um, for bringing this, uh, to the floor today at a recent meeting, um, including yourself and, and Councilor Fekner, um, as well as some residents and, and groups from, um, the eastern suburbs, um, of Division Three, um, and those residents that arguably are most significantly impacted, um, by the odour, um, from the, the waste sites. Um, it's made very clear that residents, um, are very, uh, concerned and upset, um, about the impact on their health, um, and they don't have a lot of confidence in the information that's been given them to date. So this is a great mechanism. I believe a, a formal inquiry will, will add that level of detail and transparency that hopefully will lead to some confidence in the community that, you know, they, they should or should not be concerned, um, whatever the outcome proves, um, in relation to their health. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Any other discussion? Thank you, Councilor Fekner.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to commend you on bringing this to council today. Um, I think it's, um, a really important motion and I think that, um, we as the local government have operated, um, in the periphery of these waste issues, which aren't generally in local government remit, um, but we've been doing a hell of a good job of advocating for our residents in this way. Um, sometimes it's about leading the horse to water and offering up solutions. Um, it's about packaging up what we hear from our residents and triaging their comments, concerns and complaints. Um, and this goes a long way to answering a lot of the questions that we've been fielding from our residents in those impacted suburbs. What are we breathing in the air? What is happening to our waterways? Is our health going to be negatively impacted by this? Um, you know, both yourself and myself made it clear at the Stop the Stink rally that communication between the Department of Environment and Science, the state government and our community needs to be improved, um, because that relationship is extremely fractious. There's no trust that the state government is doing the right thing by our community. Um, this allows the state government to open up that line of dialogue once more and to confirm to the community, um, you know, what, what is actually happening, happening in, in their area. Um, I think this is a really, really important, um, step forward for us. Um, and I support this motion wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fekner. I'd like to thank yourself and Councilor Doyle, but also Councilor Island and the Deputy Mayor. Uh, you've been very hands-on with residents, um, who were impacted by this. Uh, the idea for this inquiry actually came from the former member for Bundabah, Joanne Miller, who raised it at there. And I'd like to give credit to the Minister, um, Megan Scanlon for coming to the Stop the Stink And I'd like to give credit to the minister, Megan Scanlon, for coming to the Stop the Stink rally. It wasn't an easy public meeting for her, but she, she did come there and she did listen, and it gives me hope that, that I think we'll have some success with this.
Mayor, I just had a question.
Yes.
Has this been discussed with any of our local members or anything? Or is this the first, you know, cab off the rank?
Apart from at the Stop the Stink rally?
Yeah, I've always found our local members to be pretty responsive to these sorts of inquiries when I've made them on my own. So I'm just curious as to whether this has been discussed with them already.
Not since the Stop the Stink rally, no I haven't. Deputy mayor? Any other questions or discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It gets unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor? How do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's carried. On to item 40, which is business outstanding. And we have two questions on notice have been placed under the business outstanding. As a reminder that these matters are still outstanding unless they've been dealt with by other means. And there was a question on notice to the CEO from the ordinary council meeting of the 24th of March on the 2011 flood, that was raised by councillor Tully. Has that been provided?
My apologies through you, Chair. Mayor, I will need to follow that up as a matter of priority. I, I was on leave at that time, my apologies, I'll follow up with the, with the organisation.
Okay, thank you. The next one, any comments to that councillor Tully? Microphones?
I think we do need to have a procedure in place that there's prompt responses to questions on notice, that's an important function of the council.
Absolutely.
And for councils, councilors to obtain information.
Agreed. Next one is a question on notice to the CEO from the ordinary council meeting, the, the 21st of April, on penalty infringement notices and court proceedings raised by councillor Tully. Has that been, have those responses been provided? I believe it has, has it?
My understanding is that, that has. Chair?
Councillor, my understanding is that that question on notice has been responded to? Thank you. The next business outstanding, outstanding.
Question for you, Mayor, before we move on. Moving forward, the questions on notice and those responses, if they're listed in the agenda, should they not be listed as attachments, the responses to those questions as well? I mean, if we ask them in a public forum, would it not be vigilant?
So to have them attached as, as part of the minutes is what you are?
To attach the responses to those questions as part of the meeting, I think, moving forward, I'd like that to happen.
I'll defer to the CEO.
Get more than happy, Chair, to do that. Thank you. With that second matter there, that was circulated as a mayor and councillor briefing note, but can certainly be attached, yes.
Thank you councillor Fekna for raising that. The next one for business outstanding is item 14.1, which is the community engagement report on the naming of the bridge on the Synathembe Boulevard, Springfield Central, the renaming of Pasali Drive, Yamanto. There are three recommendations there. I've actually asked, I've put forward a to change recommendation C, have you got that there? So recommendation A is that the report and its attachments be received and the contents noted, that the council notes and considers the community sentiment and options for the potential renaming of these assets in line with the council's naming procedure. And C is that having considered the community sentiment and suggested options, the CEO is to work with the relevant indigenous groups, that they will decide the new names for these assets in accordance with the council's naming procedure. In speaking to this, to move this.
Mayor, I'll move a procedural motion that the matter lie on the table until the June ordinary council meeting.
May I ask why?
Yes, under the meeting procedures, there's a provision for a matter to lie on the table as a procedural motion at any time. If, if one looks at item 10.6.1, there's a provision in relation to the need for further consideration and the, and this is a longstanding matter. And I just submit that it would be appropriate to defer this until that meeting.
And councillor Tully, I'm just reading that 10.6.1, it does say a, a procedural motion that the matter lay on the table shall only be moved where the chairperson or a councillor requires additional information on the matter or the result of some other action of council or person is required. Before the matter may be concluded at the meeting, where such a procedural motion is passed, the council shall proceed with the next matter on the business paper. Is there additional information that you are?
I do require a range of additional information, which I would intend to seek over that period of time.
Could you give an indication to the council on what kind of information you're, you're seeking?
Some of the background, the numbers of people who were consulted or provided the information, just a whole range of issues. I just think, yeah, as a procedural motion, I've indicated in accordance with 10.6.1 that I certainly require more information. And in my view, it would be appropriate for this to be deferred for one month.
Okay. I guess I'll, I'll speak against that, but I guess we'll see if there's a mover and a second for that. So you're moving that?
Oh, it's a, one of the prescribed procedural motions that doesn't require a second.
My apologies, does it need a second? And I guess speaking against, I think the report there has the information on the community engagement that occurred in, in line with the community engagement policy of council. I guess you're moving the fact that, that this matter be laid on the table. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And I can see that councillor Island, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully and councillor Milligan. How do you vote, deputy mayor?
I vote in the affirmative.
Affirmative, okay, in that case, that, this matter is now laid on the table. Thank you. I should do, those vote against, sorry, those against. Me, myself, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekna and councillor Kunselman. Thank you very much. I'll move on to item 15, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. And we go to item 15.1, which is the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee. And I move that the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee report for of 2022, of the 5th of May, be noted. Do I have a second to that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion on those minutes? On those reports, sorry? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor, how would you, how would you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Move on to item 15.2, the Governor's Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee for seeing how he would like to deal with that, this matter.
I refer to the recommendations made by the committee fortnight ago, and I stand by all of them and recommend the adoption of the report as per the meeting agenda.
So meeting all items one through to five? So you're moving that? Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion on the, yes, please, thank you councillor Tully.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to speak in relation to item four, the appointment of an urban utilities board member. And the, the recommendation is certainly strongly supported by me that, that we endorse the appointment of Jared Pender as a board member. Jared has been a resident of Ipswich all his life. He was a councillor of the city of Ipswich from 1994 to the year 2000. He's a lawyer by profession. I think it is an excellent opportunity for the appointment of him and that he's an ideal candidate for that position. Can I say at a personal level, I've always found Mr Pender, as he is now committed to social equality. He's, he pioneered the vote on the environmental levy in this city, and he's certainly been a person who's been an excellent advocate for the city. Even though as a board member of Urban Utilities, he doesn't represent the city. In fact, his, his role is, is broader to represent the interests of all, all members. The position is that he has the city of Ipswich at heart, and I'm sure that decisions made by him in that role will reflect his connection with the city, but his legal responsibilities as a, as a board member at large in that sense of urban utility. So I'd certainly strongly support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor Tully, that was a great discussion, myself and councillor Doyle as well, in relation to have someone from Ipswich back on the board of Urban Utilities. And Jared Pender is indeed highly regarded and highly qualified for the role. And I think it's a great, Urban Utilities, I think, are very lucky to have him on the board. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item 15.3, which is the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee. I'll hand that over to the Chair of that committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to discuss further item four from that committee, but happy to move recommendations on through three in batch.
Okay. Do I have a second for moving one to three? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion on items one through to three?
Yeah, just through you, Mayor, I'd like to just read out a few highlights from the committee and a few highlights from the report, from the reports that weren't necessarily discussed or highlighted at committee. So we had the Indigenous Accord Milestones report, which was a fabulous report outlining some of the good work that we're doing and some of that work that we're continuing to do. So some of those highlights include the Ipswich City Council Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Employee Working Group was launched on the 17th of March. We went to a wonderful lunch down in Torma Place, which was a nice little highlight to kick that off. Importantly, cultural ceremonial and NADOC leave is to be included in the 2022 certified agreements. It's a huge milestone for this organisation and should be commended for doing that. The Regional Arts and Development Fund programme awarded Sharon Miri Bello funding to deliver the Moong Bwana project, an educational learning video about country, language, native flora and fauna through First Nations storytelling. Council funded the Gadaborganung Aboriginal Corporation Murray Cultural Camp, 40 young people engaging with local elders at the Ivory Rock Conservation Centre. The Viva Cri bursary was awarded to Goodness State School. This project will embed First Nations language, learning and history into their school, which I think is a first for the Ipswich LGA. So Ipswich City Council continues to support the community initiatives that build strong and active communities and highlights contributions made by First Nations peoples. We also delved into the depths of the customer experience strategy, something that's really important to this council, improving the way we deliver services outward to our community. So we received that first quarterly report, which was in, to do with the strategy which we endorsed last October. So it's nice that we're, you know, getting things moving along here. The implementation of the 17 actions and the immediate action plan have commenced, as we heard at committee. A selection of the 18 priorities in the customer experience strategy have commenced, enabling substantive programme of works to be ready for implementation from July 1 this year, which is great. So benchmarking measures have commenced, including the net promoter score. In the next two months, this ben, the benchmarking for the customer experience satisfaction will also begin. The council, certainly our committee, look forward to further reports on the customer experience programme, monitoring and evaluating council, and actively and continuously improving to listen, care, deliver a great everyday experience for our community. And while I've got the floor, I'd just like to plug the Ipswich Art Awards. It's very special, again, to the Community Culture, Arts and Sport Committee, which opens this Friday night to a sell-out crowd. For those public who wish to attend the exhibition, they can start to attend from Saturday, the 21st of May, with the weekend trading hours being 10am until 2pm, Monday through Friday, 10am till 3.30pm. You, we're also encouraging people to buy art during that process and vote on the People's Choice Awards. And that's all I have to say on, on those matters. Thank you for indulging, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Fekna. Any other discussion? No, in that case, I'll put items one through to three to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item four of the Community Culture and Arts Committee agenda and that report. Do I have a mover for that? Yes councillor Fekna, and a second? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk to the relevant council officer if we can, but my question pertains to development approvals. So if anyone out there is able to help me.
So you're ordering someone from Planning and Regulatory Services as opposed to someone from infrastructure?
I, I guess contextually, I guess I'm unsure of who the owner of the project actually is, but a step in the process is actually, is applying for, for the MCU to get development approval to build the new pool that we spoke about as new information that was introduced at committee. So if anyone is able to speak to that, that would be great.
I think Mr Tabula is making the move towards. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, Peter Tabula, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Councillor Fekna.
Thank you, Mr Tabula, and I know that you're not across every single DA that is submitted. But I guess my question here is that has a new MCU been lodged for the new pool at the Georgie Conway Centre?
I'm unaware if it's actually been lodged, councillor Fekna. Following the conversation at the last round of meetings, there were some inquiries made about the, the ability to do the extension. And I asked the relevant planning manager, together with the relevant officer from Infrastructure and Environment Department, to get together to work out the background and understand what's required for that, that process to occur. I believe that meeting was held, but I'm not aware of the outcome of it.
Yeah, okay, because we were, we were informed at the committee that construction could potentially start as soon as the end of this month, but that's not looking likely if there's no development approval in place. There's, there's no ability to start works until there's an official approval, is that correct?
Correct, correct. And there was some previous history where an application had been lodged, but then lapsed because of, of other reasons. So it was quite clear at that stage that for an additional pool to go in there, that there requires, there is a requirement for a DA to be lodged.
Yep.
My ask was Tabula, may we speak to the relevant council officer who was at that meeting to tell us what was the outcome of that meeting? I understand that you may not know the answer, but if we could find out, rather than waiting another month?
Yeah, certainly I'll circulate an update to the councillors.
Okay. Now the questions, Mr Tabula? Okay, thank you. I'll open up for further discussion?
Yeah, just, I guess, out of interest for the council and for further discussion, councillor Tully, you might be able to weigh in on a few of these planning matters. I have, we had our, we had our research assistant do a little bit of backgrounding on the previous MCU. And one of the reasons for it not being approved was that the, the correct owner's consent was not provided. Specifically, there was contention around whether the state government needed to give permission before the MCU went. So we've been through that before, it was a protracted process. And it's disappointing that we heard at committee that construction could potentially start at the end of this month, but we know that you're unable to do that. So I guess there's a little, there'll be a little bit of disappointment in the community. And I would like to, do, do you recall any of that happening councillor Tully?
Well, all I can say, not in relation to that specifically, but owner's consent is a very important aspect of any DA that is required. And this council, I think, has always taken a pretty, a very clear view on that. And I think that's very important that that happens. But that should happen properly, it's not something that takes an extensive period of time to, to determine whether or not it's been properly given.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess there was conversation at committee where we were going to have the information with regards to the pool circulated to all of the members of the committee. I personally didn't receive that email, so maybe we need to formalise that in a subsequent resolution here, just asking that there be a briefing on the status of the, the new, the construction of the new pool at the Georgie Conway Centre. So I guess I propose an additional recommendation here, that any councillor who wishes to be briefed on.
So I guess you're making an amendment?
Yeah, an amendment. Yeah, an amendment.
The exact wording, Council Fekna, you'd like for the committee clerk?
Yeah, that any councillor who wishes to be briefed on. The construction of the new pool at the Georgie Conway Centre. Should be briefed no later than Friday, the twenty-seventh of May. Council Tully, just confirming, is that a substantive motion before us?
No, I think that, I see that as an amendment.
Amendment, I'd say it's an amendment.
An addition to the. The wording there is fine, should be. Just carrying my use of. Yeah.
Probably. Be, just be briefed.
Be briefed, okay, great.
Right.
So removing the word should after Georgie Conway Centre.
Thank you. I'll just double check with Council Kunsman. Are you okay with that amendment? I think you said that you knew that an additional recommendation has been added.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council Kunsman.
Any other discussion on this matter? Then I'll move those two recommendations, that item four, as well as the new one that's been put to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's passed and carried. Move on to item fifteen point four, which is the Economic and Industry Development Committee. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee for how she'd like to deal with that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to take the recommendations of the committee in their entirety, but I just wanted to quickly speak to a few things on the agenda from the Economic Development and Industry Committee. So there was a few things happening. Obviously, we approved sponsorship for CMC Rocks and confirmed our commitment to the Winter Nationals as well. So CMC is locked in, if this passes, obviously, until 2025. So another four events we will own in Ipswich, which is fantastic and really fundamental for our ECH Dev and our growth and our community and all the country music fans out there. Winter Nats, again, is going to be bigger than ever this year, anticipated thirty-five thousand attendees and is the biggest drag racing event held in the southern hemisphere and globally outside of North America too, just FYI. And that dovetails really lovely into our Festival of Horsepower as well that we have through council. So that encompasses the Ipswich Turf Club, the Kart Club, Ipswich Kart Club out at Willowbank and Queensland Raceway as well. And then the other item on the agenda, obviously, was our Small Business Month. And just want to highlight a lot of stuff that has been happening in ECH Dev. And one of the big ticket items is our partnership with TAFE that we, myself and the Mayor, were at last night with the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce. So there is a bespoke Cert Four in business entrepreneurship for twenty businesses that we will fund from existing to new. And it's a sixteen-week certificate that can take small businesses on the journey, include mentoring and group work, learning from their peers. And it's a really, really exciting piece of work that we are, yeah, that we're working on here. And I think that I'm excited about the data that we're going to collect from that and then the partnerships that we are creating and building with our trainers, including TAFE. So I think TAFE is underestimated. And so I'm so happy that we can elevate them like this and share this certificate for. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Council Johnnig. So you're moving all four items, fifteen point four. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Ireland. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's carried. We now move on to item fifteen point five, the Environment Sustainability Committee. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee for how they'd like to deal with this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Four of 2022. And in doing so, I'd just like to highlight. Yep. Wait for a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fekna.
Highlight that the one item on the agenda was that recognising emergency services volunteers during National Volunteer Week this week. And I would like to thank fellow councillors who decked out in orange yesterday for Wear Orange to Work Day. Thank you very much. Some clearly make a bigger splash of orange than others. So not that it was a competition, but it was very, very good to see that support. I'm sure that the city's emergency services volunteers appreciate that and just simply knowing that they are supported by their community is generally what, all that they ask for. They do a fantastic job, day in, day out, week in, week out, year after year, as we have seen during the recent events. So I just wanted to highlight that and commend anybody else in the organisation that I didn't catch up with yesterday that did participate.
Thank you, Council Milligan. Any other discussion?
Just through you, Mayor. I even matched my toe paint, just saying.
You what, sorry? I didn't hear that.
I've got orange toenails as well. Yeah, just talked to Council Milligan's comments about volunteers and then particularly SES. So I formed a lot of friendships during the recent flood event based on just running into these people, helping our community, you know, around the clock. And they're truly inspiring. And yeah, hats off to them. So thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you. And I think during the committee, there was also a push for people to volunteer, that the SES would love to have more members. They're very active. You have a great training. There's great camaraderie within the group there. And you're doing something that'll practically help our community as well. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item fifteen point six. Knowing that item four was resolved, thank you. So fifteen point six, which is the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, I'll hand over to that committee chair for how she'd like to deal with this item.
Mayor, just for the minutes to note that I've left the team's call. Thank you.
I think because we just, oh, okay. It's not the minutes yet. Thank you. So I note that, Council Fekna and the Deputy Mayor leaving the room. Thank you. Council Doyle, I'll have to, she was the Chair of that committee on how you'd like to manage that report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to move the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee report, recommendations one to four in batch.
I'll just check with the CEO. I think we want to think because item four was resolved at the special council meeting on the fifth of May. I have in my notes. The tenancy.
Yes, you are correct.
But that was then dealt with separately at a special meeting post that. So I'll still.
No worries. So you're moving items one through to four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No worries. Okay. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Milligan. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can just highlight, obviously, as you mentioned, item number four was around the Zambrero lease, the latest lease of the Nicholas Street Precinct, noting that it'll bring approximately twenty jobs to our local economy. And also note that almost during the same week, Gelatismo, I know commenced their interviews for local ice creamery people. So that's fantastic news. And I guess the highlight this week is the Main Streets of Australia Week. And one of the highlights of the week will be the little pup-up or pop-up dog park in Darcy Doyle Place for dog lovers. Four o'clock on Friday. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Council Doyle. Any other discussion on fifteen point six? I think Council Tully liked the pup-up instead of the pop-up.
The pop-up park.
With puppetinos.
Have you puppetino? In that case, I will put fifteen point six to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room and carried. Thank you. So just wait for Council Madge. Any Council Fekna to come back? Thank you. I understand that the Deputy Mayor's back and Council Fekna. Thank you for coming back in. We're at item sixteen. Sixteen point one is the CEO Organisation Performance Report for April 2022. I guess before going into, I'll move the recommendation to the CEO Organisation Performance Report for April 2022 be received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Council Doyle, thank you.
I open up for discussion and I defer to the CEO just looking at the current significant matters. I guess I'm looking at the impact of flood recovery as well as doing our business as usual with mowing and road maintenance and so on. What are your views on how this is progressing?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Mayor and council, I guess to highlight and underscore what is there. Council, organisation and officers are continuing to do their very best to do all that we can to support the community through the recovery of the flood event earlier this year and have moved well and truly into the recovery actions. We're working very hard to secure all possible grant funding that we can secure to support the community and council to respond and recover from the flood event. The recent scare just last weekend as well, we know had many community members very concerned about the rising floodwater. And of course, it continues to rain. So we'll continue to do our very best to both respond and recover the community and continue that support being provided. Of course, it has an impact on our, what would otherwise be the planned work, whether that is because we diverted resources importantly and necessarily to assist the community through the recovery, assisting in the removal of all of the debris, et cetera, that was created and the ruin and destruction. So that together with the rain, unfortunately, as you'll, as you would have heard at the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee and in this report, has impacted on our capital works programme. We will just continue to work to recover as much of that as we can through this weather. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, CEO. Any other points of discussion? I just highlight, CEO, the workplace health and safety and praise you for the continued improvements in the lost time injury frequency rate and lost time severity rate. We have a big obligation as employers to make sure that everyone goes home safely at night. And it's wonderful to see the big leaps and bounds that the organisation's making in protecting our staff.
Thank you. Obviously, pass that on, sorry, pass that on to the team, Mayor. We have, through the Infrastructure and Environment Department, there has been an additional resource focused on our capital works. So that has certainly, in the eyes of the team, contributed to better health and safety practices in our capital works delivery. So that's certainly, touch wood, seeming to be a good investment there.
Excellent, thank you. Think, Council Doyle?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to further add to the comments around the response by this council to the floods, most recently last weekend and the event in February, and commend our CEO for her leadership. The staff went above and beyond. It falls on local governments to respond. And for some, there's this expectation that, you know, that people are just required to do their job. But I do know officers went above and beyond, particularly our people down at Bendamba. I know, for example, our plumbers worked outside of hours, off their own back to assist residents in getting their septic systems working again. They didn't have to do that, but they did. So leading by example and thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll certainly pass that straight to the teams. They are passionate about the service that they provide us, as we know, and are grateful.
Yeah, just through you, Mayor. I want to echo Council Doyle's sentiment, but I also want to continue to highlight the work that still needs to be done out in the suburbs. And it's much thanks to creativity and a fierce dedication to problem solving that we continue to be able to help our residents. Lots of these ad hoc or bespoke requests that we're getting, these calls for help, where people are only just getting back into their homes. Council is continuing to respond to that. And they're not always easy because we don't necessarily have the processes built into this organisation. But through you, CEO, please, many thanks to Mr Madigan, particularly Ms Cavanagh and her team, David McAllister at Ipswich City Waste Services, who continue to think about how we can better serve our community and actually get out and get things done. It's not taking as long as you would imagine in local government land. We are putting on our thinking caps. We're problem-solving quickly so as to help our community. So I think that our response time should be commended. You know, we still have some significant work ahead of us because there are people who are still struggling to rebuild and recover. But if we continue to act in the way that we are, we can hang our hat at the end of this and say, look, at least we didn't let anyone fall through the cracks. Anyone who contacted us, we helped them to the best of our ability. So thank you.
Agreed. And I think, Council Fekna, I'd like to pull out the community development team as well, who are still working. And I guess if anyone has any issues, come to Council and we'll help facilitate those connections to get support because I know it is overwhelming. So, you know, contact us and we will help you. So also kudos to the community development team. They've been very hands-on. And I think Council Kunsman was next.
Thank you, Mayor. You and Council Fekna have just said exactly what I was going to say.
My apologies. Thank you. I think, Council Doyle, did you wish to?
I just wanted to reiterate Council Fekna's comments around environment. Those issues that Andrew, Council Fekna, is talking about, that they problem-solved for us, were both complex and confronting and not even appropriate to discuss on the floor here. It was very confronting, the issues they had to sort out alongside residents. Phenomenal job.
Thank you very much. I think, Council Johnnig?
I've just got a question for the CEO in relation to the reconstruction of essential public assets. And I'm just wondering if that includes anything to do with the sporting clubs and the clubhouse, et cetera?
It might be best that I take that on notice. The grant funding that we seek and the particular conditions around that, happy to bring back some further information on that. Generally speaking, in the first rounds of funding and even beyond, it doesn't extend to those. So we're having to look at other ways in which we can support the recovery there.
Okay. Sorry. And just in relation to page one hundred of one twenty-nine of our pack, under actions completed since last report, my notice of motion for local office space is marked as complete. I was not aware of that, so if I could get some information on that as well?
Certainly through the chair, very happy to. Uh, that was marked complete as it was believed that at this point in time, steps had been taken uh, that led to the position being satisfactory. But clearly if that is not the case, we will uh, reopen it and take further action, but certainly happy to provide further information in the first instance.
Yeah, I guess I was um, pretty busy in the earlier part of this year. So I might have missed something. But I don't think so. But if I could just get some information back on that for clarification, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, just, just additionally to the um, issue of sporting, um, and sporting related facilities. There are five at um, Goodna. Um, there's in the Evan Margins and Park area, there's the um, gymnasium area there, the netball courts, the canteen that's used primarily by Goodna Rugby Union, Goodna Bowls Club, and then separately is the uh, Goodna Soccer Club, or, or soccer, soccer grounds at um, Goodna at the end of Enid Street. Can, can I ask that, that, yeah, we were due to have a meeting, I think, last week, uh, to be briefed on that and that was cancelled. Uh, it is really important that we're, we're getting many requests from that, those hundreds and hundreds of people involved with those various clubs about, you know, what's happening. It, it still hasn't been restored since the uh, twenty sixth of uh, February. Uh, we really need to ramp that up. If we're not going to get funding um, either in the first or, or other rounds, well, we perhaps need to have a strategy, get those clubs back on deck.
If I could, if I could just, yeah, there, um, councillor Tully, um, the area of council that's looking after this, being given certainly regular reports, I don't think there'd be any issue um, for a report sent to you on where things are at with each of the um, sporting fields in our city.
I, just to add to um, councillor Tully's comment, so it's not just division two specific, it would, it's wide, it's citywide.
Yes.
Um, and I, sorry, and I know that there are um, many different grants available for these clubs as well independently of council and um, we culturally are risk adverse to going down this path as a council because uh, we are then not delivering the work. But um, we're contracting someone else to do it, but they've got the licences. We can set the, the right parameters in, in place for risk assessment. And I think that um, combined, we should kind of work on a bit of a strategy here so we can help our budget, help our infrastructure team, um, and help these clubs out as well.
Um, Mayor, if I may, um, um, as councillor Johnnig has pointed out, and you know, we, we're impacted across, right across the divisions um, with our sporting facilities. I have already asked um, these questions of uh, the CEO and, and CFO. So it might be beneficial if I share the information today I've received um, with everyone else and then potentially we'll need a briefing session maybe or, oh, yeah.
We could either call up one of the general managers or very happy to uh, organise a separate briefing on it.
Uh, I think it's, sorry.
I'll say my, 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 I'll, I'll probably ask Ben Pole to come to the uh, because he, I know that um, um, the cu- council officers have, are in touch each week with all the impacted sporting clubs. Yeah. And I know myself being in touch with a number of them as, as well, so.
Sorry. If, if, if I may, I, I think the discussion is, is a lot larger than some questions on the floor today. I say that with absolute respect. Um, and it's not just about in engagement with, with the, with the, the clubs. Um, we're, we're all doing that. There's a, there's a bigger question which I've raised with the CEO and CFO um, around insurance or not. Flood insurance is a problem and um, and the funds required um, to fix the buildings.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, I.
And I guess we're just looking, we're probably very close to briefing councils on the flood recovery plan as well.
And just to add to uh, councillor Doyle's comment, so I have had feedback as well independently from councillor Doyle. But I think that we should collaborate this so that we can have a council wide strategy um, on moving forward here, uh, because it's, it is, it's an unusual circumstance. Um.
And it's timely. We're in, we're in budget discussions.
And it's costly. And so, yeah, so I think overall, we should have a bit of an overarching strategy here.
I'll just defer to, um, councillor Cornsman is the chair of the Local Recovery Resilience Group, who, who is steering the um, flood recovery plan. And I'm just seeking to, when, when that will be presented to the rest of the councillors. The local recovery plan. Do you want to put your microphone? As the chair of the Local Recovery Resilience Group, you're stewarding the local recovery plan?
I'm happy to share that.
Okay. And I guess organise a briefing for councils?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the CEO performance report? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
I abstain. Please record that in a minute.
You abstain?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, moving on to item sixteen point two, the monthly financial performance report for April two thousand and twenty two. And the recommendation is that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending the thirtieth of April twenty twenty two submitted in accordance with section two A four of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve be considered a noted by council. So I'll move that. Do I have a second uh, for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Um, may I have the CFO come to the lectern, please?
Morning, Mayor and councillors. Paul Mullenhauer, acting chief financial officer.
Thank you, Mr Mullenhauer. Obviously we had a great discussion about floods. So may I ask us the chair to, no side conversations? Um, um, we're looking at the impact of the flood. Um, obviously, um, we, we've heard in the papers and the media that there's you know, millions and perhaps billions of dollars being spent by the state and federal governments. But what I'm seeing here is that there's going to be a real slug to the rate payers um, for things. How are we going with grants and getting money from QRA to make sure that, 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 that we get the appropriate money? Um, so the rate payers of it's which are not slugged with, with the cost of the, the floods.
So we, through the standard process that sits within the QRA regime, um, council's continuing to accumulate its costs, roll them through. Uh, as council's aware, we've received a million dollar advance from the QRA in response to the initial event. Um, we're also talking with the QRA in and around how the most recent May event um, may be considered. Um, whether or not that's being thought of as a separate issue or being pulled together. We're still waiting on advice back from the QRA in that regard. We've had a, um, I'll refer to it as, as an allocation of a separate million dollars, of which we received three hundred thousand, which is outside of the standard initial recovery issues. Um, which allows us to deal with um, and provide funding for things that are outside of that, that normal pot. And then I think if we refer to the normal category C and category D issues, which cover off on some of those um, non-essential public assets, um, we're still waiting to hear where the QRA are going to land on those issues. Um, I can let council know that we have, in regards to the initial million dollars that we've already received, we've lodged a first claim of two thousand. Um, officers are still working through some fine tuning on that. That relates a lot to our direct costs that were incurred in the initial CDO response. Um, and I'm told that by the end of the month, we'll be in a position to lodge a second claim, which will take us over and above that first initial million dollars. Um, I don't have a figure in my head at the moment in terms of what that second claim will look like, but we know that our costs are in that um, I think we've got it listed in the report of about three point.
Three point eight, isn't it?
Probably is. About three point eight million in total. Now, we do know that some of that under standard QRA guidelines for our, say, normal day labour won't be recoverable. But we'll continue to work with the QRA on that process. There will be a timing issue involved in and around that. There is a, there's a a process as we lodge those claims where they have to go out, do the inspections to pull all that back. Um, but we're also working in the background, looking at what other issues we've got that we can deal with in and around um, state and federal funding to help support those issues. Um, and particularly when we've given previous discussions around sporting clubs, how that might look and where that might go. But there's no, we don't have anything, I suppose, definitive at this point in time.
Okay. Noting a lot of our um, infrastructure environment divisions, people that, that do, do um, build the roads and fix the roads and, and, and do the mowing and, and so on. Um, this is having, the floods obviously have an impact on our capital works delivery as well as delivering on those services. Um, do you know how the organisation's planning to deal with that?
So the, the level of spend and, and the level of delivery, I think, has been conveyed through the um, Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee reports. From a financing perspective, um, the fact that you've got that encapsulated within your budget now for the twenty one, twenty two year, any level of under-delivery, whether it be specifically around the flood events, or the weather events, uh, or due to supply constraints and other delivery issues, that funding is able to be preserved through the continuity of the budget processes. So it'll give council an opportunity to come back and look at its budget into the twenty two, twenty three year, re-prioritise and reallocate through that part of the process.
Okay. Any other questions for the acting CFO? Yes, thank you, councillor Johnny.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not sure if I could, should be asking you this or it should be with the CEO. But um, I'm just wondering, do we have any internal modelling for financial forecasting um, with our Nicholas Street development so far? Because we did engage our QTC just over twelve months ago, but we have yet to receive any, um, anything back on that financial advisory side of things.
My understanding, I'm happy to defer to the CEO, but my understanding is that, that um, those conversations with QTC and the work that they're doing is close to coming back to um, the organisation for a, a final update. And I believe after that, it will be provided back through to councillors.
Do we know when that is?
Um, at the next workshop, which is um, not too far away.
That's what I heard in February, I think.
Hmm.
Um, I've just been waiting on this modelling for a while, I guess, with the decisions that we're making financially. Um, we were told that we would have some software to better predict and obviously analyse and make decisions. And obviously it's coming up to the end of financial year and we're building our budget for next year. So we're kind of uh, locking ourselves in for fifteen month timeframe uh, going forward. So I'm just wondering if we actually have some concrete dates on that QTC workshop?
If I may, through you, Mayor, as chair, we have a meeting with QTC at two PM this afternoon. So I'll obtain a timeframe and advise.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions with the acting CFO? Thank you, Miss Mullenhauer. Appreciate that. Open up for any other discussion on the, I think it's always at this time of the year, when we're coming to the end of the financial year, it's um, very important to see where we see the um, how delivery is going. Obviously the floods had a, a big impact. And I'm very cognizant of the fact that we have applied for every grant available through the Queensland Reconstruction Authority to ensure that the rate payers aren't slugged with the cost of so many things when the, when the state and the federal governments having um, pretty upfront with, that they wanting to, I guess, provide more money and make things more resilient for floods in the future. I'll put the, um, that recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's carried. We're now moving to item seventeen. Oh, sorry, my apologies. Yes, it's, um, I'll move for um, a thirty minute adjournment. It's ten twenty, ten um, thirty eight, so till um, eight minutes past eleven. Um, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, thank you. It's unanimous in the room. And deputy mayor, we, we're now, um, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Affirmative and come back at eight minutes past eleven. Thank you.
Back. Is councillor, is the deputy mayor on? Think we're back after an adjournment. I can see everyone is in the room. May I just confirm that the deputy mayor is online?
I'm still here.
Wonderful, thank you deputy mayor. We now move on to item seventeen, which is notices of motion. And the first one, seventeen point one, is a notice of motion regarding the Ripley Valley Library. And this one put forward by the deputy mayor. So I'll hand over to you deputy mayor to, to move this.
Uh, yes, I move the motion.
Would you like to read it out?
I don't agree with that practice. I think we can all read what's in front of us.
Okay. For the benefit of the last term, this is a notice of motion submitted by the deputy mayor, Jacob Madsen concerning planning for interim library to service the proposed Ripley Valley catch, library catchment. Deputy Mayor Jacob Madsen gave notice of his intention to move the following motion at the council meeting on the nineteenth of May, uh, to, um, for this meeting. And there are three motions there. A, that Ipswich City Council commence planning for delivery of library services to the proposed Ripley Valley library catchment. B, that council consider what options are available for the next few years to provide library services in the interim. And C, the report be presented to, presented concerning the progress on A and B to a future Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee meeting. So as the move, do you wish to speak? Oh, so you're moving in and I have, and I can see councillor Ireland wanting to second it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So hand over to you now deputy mayor to, um, to speak to it.
The motion's particularly self-explanatory this morning, but, um, what I wanted to touch on is that, um, council previously hasn't been pretty good at getting ahead of some of the things that were responsible before in the, uh, catchment of the PDA. It's worth stating that the population will swell to a hundred and fifty thousand over the next twenty years is the latest sort of projections. Um, in regards to why I've brought this to the floor this morning is that, um, councillor Ireland and I are out and about in our division a lot and there's a lot of young children, um, in the area, a lot of first home buyers and, um, I'm not, I'm not in favour of delaying any form of interim service there. Um, these are people paying rates and we haven't delivered on the road network. There's a shortage of community infrastructure. Um, anything that council can do to be proactive about the provision of library services would, uh, have my full support. I'm happy to answer any questions from my fellow councillors this morning, but for me, it's just about making sure that the ball is rolling and, um, these critical services will be provided to my community.
Thank you deputy mayor. Have you made any information requests or budget requests as to how much this will cost?
No, that's a, a bit, um, that's a bit more advanced than where council is on this, mayor, with all due respect. Um, I've had discussions about it. Um, we have guidelines of what we would call the Ripley Valley library catchment. We've had some delay on the adoption of a new library strategy. Um, ultimately, the cost of land is going up and we need to figure out what we're doing. Um, and until we know what we're doing, we can't really talk about dollar figures.
Okay, so you're assuming that this notice of motion will have no financial cost to the council?
That's certainly what I felt was implied by the words.
Okay. I'll refer to you CEO. Does it look like this, do these motions have a, a cost impact?
Uh, so the, the cost, I guess, would come in, in terms of the commencement of planning and, uh, that would be in the first instance, as I would understand it, it would be looking at what are the potential options, uh, noting in B that it would be, you know, what are the options in terms of interim library services while longer term options were considered? So certainly it would at minimum require officers to dedicate their time to that planning. It, it is something, however, that offices are already absolutely, um, uh, turning their minds to. So, uh, if I look for a nod from the general responsible general manager, I would say that when it comes to the, the, uh, notice of motion and the, the consideration and planning, that we can do that internally and come back to, uh, per C, a future meeting to prepare and present a report.
Okay, so that's acceptable.
Manageable within existing resources.
Okay, thank you CEO. Any other questions? No. Yes, councillor Consumon?
Um, could I ask councillor Madsen if he wants to put a time on that report?
Uh, I'm more than happy without a time. I have no issue with the department in question. Um, they'll come back to it when's reasonable. Um, it's important to understand that this motion this morning is not an imposition. It's just about ensuring there's progress for library services in the Ripley Valley because there are a lot of children and they deserve those services.
Thank you. I think, uh, deputy mayor, there's no doubt with the young population happening in, uh, in Ripley Valley. I guess I just want to confirm that there's been no budget bids by, by, by my, by Division One councillors for any of this work? A budget bid, we have a budget process?
Mayor, there has been no budget bid because there is no assessment yet on what timeline this potential project would be delivered. There is no decision or inference of about what sort of interim services will occur. So until there's a view from council about what council is comfortable with having there, it is completely not relevant to talk about budget until we have options that are costed to discuss.
I understand you talking about deputy mayor, about the, the libraries, but I think the, the cost for planning, but I think from my gather from the CEO, that's able to be done within business as usual? Okay. Thank you. Um, before I go to the vote, did you wish to say anything else deputy mayor?
Um, I'd just like this to ultimately, whatever this, um, path leads us to, I'd like that to be included in a library strategy and I'd like to see us adopt one of those um, before the end of this term. Um, Ipswich City Council libraries were something that were very meaningful to me and my family in, um, our childhood and encouraged a love of, um, literature, which I'm sure some of you get a bit annoyed about some of the weird, weird stuff that I read and refer to. Um, but I think it's an important step forward. Um, we, we've got a growing city and we need to make sure that we have the planning in place to deliver, um, what is required.
Thank you. I did say I was going to go to the vote, but I can see councillor Ireland's put her hand up.
Thank you mayor. It's just that, uh, I'd like to state that the education department is going to build thirteen schools out through the Ripley Valley and that's already started, they're already getting land. So I think that, um, there's obviously little babies, zero to five coming through that we need to start to provide those baby rhyme times and things for. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Consumon?
Just a general statement mayor, as you would expect me to say, uh, about the importance of libraries and, um, the difference that they make to people.
Thank you.
And, um, I think councillor Madsen and I are reading some of the same weird stuff.
Thank you. Any other, I'll put that to the vote, uh, put A, B and C to the vote. Uh, those in favour in the room? It's unanimous in the room. I'm assuming deputy mayor that you're in favour?
Affirmative.
Uh huh, thank you, it's carried, thank you for that. We move on to item seventeen point two, which is a notice of motion on the Red Bank Plains Library. I'll hand over to you deputy mayor to move it and speak to it.
Uh, thank you mayor, um, I think we need a seconder before I can speak to this motion this morning.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Ireland is seconding this?
Uh, thank you mayor, um, thank you everyone for your time this morning to talk about library, um, services in the great Division One. Um, if you've been listening to Sheila and I for the last twelve months, you would acutely know that there's a lack of community meeting space in the most populated suburb in Ipswich, Red Bank Plains. Um, there's an opportunity now at the Red Bank Plains Library where the, uh, former mobile library in Prime Mover is no longer in a shed there. Um, we've put forward for it to be looked at as to whether or not it's feasible, um, to convert that into some meeting space, um, certainly with some, um, out of hours access. Um, in future, council's got some upgrades to the car park occurring there. Um, councillor Ireland and I are nearly at a point where we can talk at length publicly about the return of the full original floor plan of the library. Um, so it's just about ensuring that our growing community, which already has a dem, a easily demonstrated size, um, has the proper community and council infrastructure it deserves.
Thank you. I'll just go to the seconder. Councillor, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you mayor. We have a very diverse, uh, division in Red Bank Plains. I, I think, um, we very much follow on from Division Two with some, the diversity. Um, and we're, there's very little, there's, um, no churches as such that we can hire for, um, meeting spaces for different organisations or if they can get space, it is extremely expensive. So there's a great need for them to have space. Um, and, you know, we've, we're, we're looking at libraries as being a community hub, not just a library. And I think that this would start to help make the change for Red Bank Plains. Thank you.
Thank you. Open up for any discussion, questions? I'll be the governance person again, deputy mayor. Have there been any information requests or any budget, um, requests for this particular item?
Uh, mayor, as the Governance and Transparency Committee Chair of our great council, I can reliably inform you that it's the same as the last matter. This is just the starting thing. We've had some preliminary, preliminary conversations. We even accepted a community impact report on the Red Bank Plains Community Centre, which identified a shortage of community space. Um, it's important not to get too far ahead, mayor. We're just starting the conversation, seeing whether it's feasible, uh, before we get too excited.
Thank you. I'll just check in with the CEO, would this be able to be, will this have a cost or be able to be done within BAU?
Thank you again, Chair and, uh, council. So, uh, yes, once again, it will take officers' time, uh, but we can absolutely do it within existing resources and won't require a budget allocation to do so.
Thank you very much CEO. Any other discussion? Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. And deputy mayor, I assume you're on affirmative there?
A strong advocate for Red Bank Plains, voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item seventeen point three, which is a notice of motion from councillor Ireland on Carmichael's Road. I'll hand over to yourself to, to move that.
Thank you mayor. I, um, would like to move a motion that, um, we look at Carmichael's Road, which leads into Harding's Paddock at Perga, um, to look at whether the width of the road is suitable for dual caravans to, to pass each other on some of the bends.
So the notice of motion on, on the here is that council commenced planning for the upgrade of Carmichael's Road?
Yeah, just, I want them to have a look at it. Uh, okay, well, I'll just read what he is. Hope that the works will encourage many more visitors to Carmichael's Road will need to be upgraded to accommodate for the additional vehicles expected to use the road.
Okay.
We have just recently spent a lot of money out there, so I'm looking to help more people turn up.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for this? Thank you councillor Milligan. I'll leave it for discussion, do you wish to add anything else to that?
Um, well, on a recent visit out there with, um, councillor Milligan and councillor Madsen, um, it's a beautiful area. It's, it has been, um, upgraded significantly and it, I hope that, um, we will have a lot of people going out there. Um, the facility for camping, while it was all locked up, we couldn't get in there, but there was one caravan there. But, um, um, I was just wondering whether the road is, um, wide enough all the way through or whether it needs a little bit, it's a gravel road, but whether it needs a little bit of upgrading so that two caravans or could pass each other? That was, that's my concern.
Thank you. As a seconder councillor Milligan, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you mayor, uh, just, um, speaking with regards to the, um, the request, uh, the notice of motion, uh, councillor Ireland has put in viewing that, the, the section of road, um, where there are passing points, the passing points are only fairly in, in close to the camp area and another one at the major bend, um, almost, uh, completely out. So as councillor Ireland has, has stated, if there were two articulated vehicles, uh, four-wheel-drive towing a caravan in either direction, there would be some sort of, um, I can see the possibility of problem of congestion and, and how they manage to, uh, to pass. So, um, councillor Ireland, um, requesting that, um, um, planning for the upgrade, um, be done. I, I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, initially there would be a, um, an assessment done and, and details on that provided to council first.
Okay. Councillor, are you aware of what the cost for the planning would be?
No mayor, it's just a starting point. I haven't gone out and had anything costed.
Okay.
So this is just a starting point to raise the concern.
Okay, I guess I'll refer to the CEO. Um, do you know what the cost for doing the planning? I know with other roads, there is usually significant cost for the, the planning.
Hmm, thank you mayor, chair. On this one, I will, um, no I don't, is the short answer. Uh, it's not on the current programme of work, um, or, uh, in budget discussions that we've been having over the recent months. So I would need to come back to council with advice on, uh, when we could commence planning on this. So I would need to come back to council with advice on when we could commence planning on this one.
Okay. So it sort of would be an additional budget item?
Potentially, um, certainly whether or not we are able to allocate internal resources to commence the planning in light of all of the other priorities on the programme at the present time. So I'd need to come back on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Council Tolly?
Yes, there's, um, it's just a matter of terminology that, you know, we've had the two previous motions and it's quite right to look at whether it's committing now the council to any costs or significant costs. Some of this is all early days, I think, including this one. I wonder, in this particular case, if we'd added the word preliminary planning rather than a full plan or a full design or anything like that. I think that's what's intended, because we're going to continue to get these sorts of motions. And I think if we use words of that nature, like preliminary, and I'd suggest to the mover, that perhaps, um, that might make it clear to officers
Thank you.
that it's a very preliminary sort of situation.
Thank you, Council, because obviously we're committing when it's not in the budget. I'll just check with Council, are you happy to have the council commence preliminary planning for the upgrade of Carmichael's Road?
That's exactly what I was trying to get to, so thank you.
I'll just check with the second.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, so if it went to just a very basic assessment and very high order and a level of costing on, on options, then yeah, absolutely, that's, that's what I believe the intention of the notice of motion was.
Thank you. I think that's much, thank you for that suggestion, Council Tolly, that makes me feel more comfortable, otherwise we have to start taking other things off the budget. Okay. Uh, any other discussion on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to add a few points. Um, thank you all for your detailed discussion of semantics this morning. I think it's a very important thing that we routinely keep aware of when adopting a council motion. Uh, but more importantly, with this section of Carmichael's Road that Council Ireland has brought forward to the council chamber this morning, we are encouraging these traffic movements by having the council facilities at the end of it. So we're encouraging the usage of the road. Um, it gets quite popular, I've been out with my family on long weekends and there are so many cars. Um, it's hard to believe when you go there in the middle of the week and there's nobody there. But on the weekend, when people are out and about looking for a hike, a good picnic spot, there's a lot of traffic movements through there, so ensuring that that road is safe, well, we're encouraging people with caravans on the back to drive through, um, I think is so important and I look forward to seeing what sort of options come forward. Um, following on from what Council Milligan said, it's, it could end up just being some simple widening at a couple of key points um, to ensure that the safe, the safety's improved. Um, there's one particular turn there, that's a right angle and it is quite narrow and there's a bit of a tree there as well, so all those sorts of things. Um, I'd like them to get a look at and see what we can do to make sure that people can get to council facilities safely.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, as the mover, Council, would you like to say anything in closing?
I'd like to thank everyone for their comments and for their assistance with the wording, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item seventeen point four, which is a notice of motion on spray seal road maintenance treatments. That's a notice of motion brought on by Councilor Mahony Doyle concerning spray seal road maintenance treatments. So I'll hand over to the mover, to move.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the motion incorporates, A, that a report be prepared, which includes information on the various road surface treatment options, including spray seals, available to local governments and the relative cost and benefits of these treatments, how council prioritise road maintenance projects, uh, how council determines when a spray seal is identified as the preferred treatment for a particular road, the number of spray seals undertaken on council roads in the last three financial years, the number of complaints received about these treatments and the number of complaints that required remediation, um, and, and, and whether council's use of spray seals is consistent with their use by comparable local governments. And, and B, that the report be presented to a future meeting of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, no later than August 2022, uh, meeting of that committee.
Thank you, and do I have a second of that motion? Thank you, Council Milligan. Do you wish to speak further to it?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, spray seals are a common maintenance treatment performed on local roads. Uh, this treatment, as I understand it, is a process through which a single layer of bitumen is sprayed as a hot liquid on the road surfaces and immediately followed by the application of a single layer of crushed aggregate. Unfortunately, both Councilor Fekner and I receive quite frequent complaints about spray seals um, in Division Three, and I suspect other councillors may also receive complaints about this treatment on roads in their divisions. Uh, equally, there is frequent feedback and, and questions from residents um, around the, um, road rehabilitation and, and the four stages um, or four types of, um, treatments that are available right through to full rebuild. Um, we appreciate that, for instance, spray seals are relatively cost-effective when compared with alternative treatments and that this enables council to maintain more roads each year. Uh, however, through this motion, we're seeking some information on the cost and benefits of spray seals. Um, and yes, how they're determined to be the preferred treatment for a particular maintenance project, how they compare with other treatments, um, any issues that may have arisen through their use, um, and, and want to get an understanding of their use by comparable local governments. And to put quite simply, I just want to be in a position to confidently assure residents um, that Ipswich City Council is adopting not only the most cost-efficient but, but the best possible, um, product available to local governments and used by local governments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Milligan, as a second, would you like to make any other comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, in supporting, um, Council Doyle's notice of motion uh, and aligning with council's philosophy of continuous improvement, uh, this is something that we do need to look at, provide the elected body of council with the information required as we engage back and forward with our community. Council Doyle is absolutely correct in that, um, at the councils, we have received complaints from residents across our divisions with regards to their experience with spray seal. Um, particularly Ipswich being very much a home of the awesome timber Queenslanders, which will often have polished hoop pine timber floors and you carry that tar and aggregate inside with you, it doesn't leave a good impression on the internals of the house. So that's just as an example, one of the things that have been communicated to me uh, by residents, some of the impacts that they feel, uh, their cars being covered in tar, um, all, all sorts of ongoing matters. So, um, if there is, uh, you know, the information provided to councils that enable us to communicate better with our residents as well as enabling us to make better decisions, uh, I believe that, um, this is a very good notice of motion to request that information.
Thank you, do anyone else like to speak to this motion?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I'd like to speak in support of the motion this morning. Um, it, um, we've certainly had some similar issues with, um, Councilor Doyle and Fekner with what they've seen in Division Three. Um, I also want to speak in favour of the structure of the motion, um, rather than information requests and those sorts of things. I think, you know, people talk about public education, this is the perfect sort of, um, report to come back for the public to review and to be shared with them. Um, our council officers have a great deal of reason behind the decisions that they make on items like these and I think a more extended, publicly available, um, report on, on spray seal treatments is, um, is a great thing to be able to refer people to in future.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? I would agree, it's a very well-avoided motion, I think it'll provoke a lot of discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I just want to point out, I've, I've only brought this after, I, I think we have discussed previously, there was going to be a briefing session around this, um, which never eventuated for a whole raft of reasons. We've had a lot of other priorities, but I think it's now time that, um, yeah, we, we turn our minds to it and have a discussion as, as a group.
Thank you, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, and Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. On the final notice of motion, which is a notice of motion on council to develop a domestic violence strategy, and this is a notice of motion submitted by Councilman Doyle concerning the development of a domestic violence strategy. I'll hand over to the mover.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I'll start by reading out, um, the, the notice of motion, uh, A, that a report be prepared, which includes information, um, on, one, how council is taking action in the community and in the council workplace to tackle domestic and family violence. How council works in partnership with all levels of government to reduce domestic and family violence. Identify opportunities for council to increase the support and services provided to combat domestic and family violence. Identify grants currently offered by council that can be accessed by domestic violence shelters and domestic violence support organisations. Advice on building a domestic and family violence strategy within council, including resources required to complete this work and estimated timeline from development to adoption by this council. Six, uh, consider developing a webpage on council's internet site that outlines council's strategy to combat family and domestic violence and lists services and support available for victims and relevant grants available for domestic and family violence support service providers. Uh, B, that the report be presented to a further meeting of the Community Culture Arts and Sport Committee, no later than, uh, the August 2022 meeting. And, and Mayor, if I may propose an amendment to be, uh, that the date August 2022 be amended to September
September.
2022, just to allow council officers sufficient time.
Thank you. And do I have a second for this? Thank you, Council Kunsman. Do you wish to speak to this, Council Tolly?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I want to say at the outset, I, I want to commend this organisation, um, leading by example. A, a lot of the matters I've identified and called for information on within the notice of motion, I note that this council is already doing. Um, what we aren't, what we haven't done, have never done here, is have that one single strategic document that pulls together all the really important work that we're doing as a council, the amazing projects, uh, that council officers, um, have underway. So I want to acknowledge the work by the organisation, um, but it's important that it comes together in, in one document, um, and, and, you know, I, there's other councils, for instance, Brisbane City Council, um, have gone down this path. So I think it's time we do, but I, I do have, um, some other comments, um, I guess, um, each May, um, Queensland marks Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month to raise awareness of this form of violence, uh, and to send a clear message that it is unacceptable. And I know we're in May and, and there's been a number of activities already and, and wish to commend Councilor Kunsman, um, for always leading, um, the charge, um, and certainly for the work, um, that you do with your Zonta colleagues. Uh, this year's theme is all of us together, focusing on the need of all levels of society uh, to work together, um, against this violence. Um, domestic and family violence, where one person in an intimate personal or family relationship uses violence or abuse to maintain power and control over the other is one of the most serious and urgent social health and safety issues facing our country. And I would just like to call out some statistics, um, from the state government on our local magistrates courts, in the year 2021, Ipswich City Council, amongst all of our, our peers, our fellow local governments, we are number four sadly, for the number of domestic violent orders that are sought through the local Ipswich Magistrates, uh, Court. Uh, the violence does not always involve physical assault, um, can include emotional, psychological, financial, sexual and social coercive control perpetrated by words as well as the actions. Since I drafted my notice of motion, I note the state government have come out and I commend them, um, to look to introduce the laws, um, against coercive control. Uh, but the violence affects one in six women and one in nine men experiencing physical or sexual abuse before the age of 15. I do note from a lot of commentary that I've seen on social media, uh, since the state government have announced the coercive control laws, um, there's been a lot of views or concerns, I guess, shared by males and advocates for males, um, that quite rightly they can also be the victim of, of domestic and, and family violence. And in fact, again, I draw on the statistics from the state government website, um, and I understand that 24% of males, um, are, can be subject to domestic violence. Um, violence can affect any person irrespective of age, gender, socio-economic status, education or cultural, um, background. Um, and on that point, um, I guess I would just like to, um, talk about my journey in relation to, uh, domestic violence matters and what led me to bring this notice of motion today. Um, since being elected two years ago, I've been contacted by numerous residents and groups seeking support. Um, you know, my first initial, um, request for assistance came, and most councillors will remember, via, um, a domestic violence shelter, um, seeking, you know, a subsidy, I guess, in relation to payment of rates. Um, in addition to that, I've had several women reach out to me for, uh, support for housing, um, whilst exiting the situation as well as, um, legal assistance. And I, I, I thought, why, why are people coming to their elected rep? We have so much information out there, people like domestic, um, like D-VAC and so many other domestic violence providers, uh, why are they coming to us or to me? And, and that is because we are leaders and, and we are public-facing and, and not everyone knows where to begin their journey of exiting a domestic violence, uh, situation. Um, and, you know, I, I just would like to finish on, um, a couple of personal, um, comments by myself, again, that led to my motivation in addition to being elected and, and having constituents reach out to me for help. Um, huge motivation for me, um, I have two instances, we are all impacted by domestic violence, uh, situations, friends, family. And in one of my recent final comments, I mentioned that domestic violence does not discriminate, it impacts all women regardless of education. Uh, somebody very close to me, highly educated, um, high-achieving woman, um, has, has had to, um, reveal and share with us that she's, uh, subject to coercive control and that she has to somehow exit, uh, her domestic violence situation. It's very confronting, um, when, when people close to you, you would never expect that from. Uh, equally as upsetting and probably more confronting is my ongoing relationship with a young woman. Uh, in the last two years, developed a close relationship with her. Um, to be quite frank, dad killed mum. And I now see the back end of domestic violence. This young woman is growing up without her mother, um, and this is a heinous crime. It, it's just a terrible disease and, um, as elected reps, I want to do everything in our power to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council, and thank you so much for opening up and, and sharing as well. I think it makes, it, um, makes a significant impact, thank you. I think Council Kunsman is wanting to make comment as well.
I'd like to thank, um, I'd like to thank Council Doyle for her comments and her, um, passion about this. I'd like to support this motion, but I'd like for it to be, the strategy to be created with, particularly with the input of those working locally with victims and survivors of domestic and family violence.
Thank you, Council Kunsman. Just recently, I was speaking, I was over at D-VAC and Amy, the CEO, was telling me that in the last 12 months, they've had a 45% increase in police referrals. Um, no additional funding from government, but a 45% increase in police referrals for domestic violence. Any, any other discussion on the matter? In that case, I put the matter to the vote, those in favour?
Affirmative.
Thank you, Jacob, thank you, it's carried. Thank you Jacob, thank you, it's carried. I'll move to item eighteen, questions on notice, are there any questions on notice?
Through you Mayor, I just want to ensure that we did in fact capture the questions on notice that Councilor Johnic put forward earlier. I did make some brief notes, which I'm presently scrambling to find.
Thank you, take your time.
But I just want, did, did we capture those previously? Okay, so Councilor.
Thank you, thank you Council, Councilor Fekner. So I guess if we did make notes, just to recap the, the query about the reconstruction of essential public assets, in particular the sporting clubs impacted by the recent floods and then and implementing a strategy to get speedy rehab at a cost effective, in a cost effective way. Just some feedback on the local council, council officers in office space, sorry. A date to confirm the QTC councillor workshop based on the provisions of our agreement that was signed in May of two thousand and twenty one. And I think that's it.
I'm happy to, if I could work with the, I'm happy to work with the clerk, I've taken my own notes. So in, if you trust me in finalising the minutes, I'll ensure that they're all captured.
Thank you. Any other questions on notice? In that case, I'll close this meeting at eleven forty seven, thank you.